War One.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have here a motion to adopt the agenda?
I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconds from your favor.
Aye.
Okay. New business, first thing on there is the lodging tax.
Flip-flop those two, Ray.
Uh-huh.
Can we flip-flop those since the one is shorter than the other?
I don't have a problem with you flipping them. You guys?
No, we're gonna make them.
We're gonna count them both in right tomorrow.
Yeah, but...
Then we're gonna be discussing both.
But I'd like to get B out of the way in the event that A takes on it and they have that second one.
Third.
Yeah. So we talked about in our last meeting, the advertising for town managers and some rates. Now, I'm trying to set, but I did not get that done. So we talked about doing Indeed. Indeed is five dollars a day. I thought it was free, it is not. So that one, you could do, you know, five dollars for a week, you know, or whatever you wanna do. Statesman, we have, I think you guys have at least received once or twice the estimate on that, which is roughly $1,200.
A day?
Uh, no, gosh, no. Let me pull that one up again. So it's for eight days. And I asked him to see if he could give me a newer rate today.
And which paper did that one?
Statesman's, out of Salem.
Okay.
Statesman's Journal.
So it's basically pulled out of the...
It was... Oh, here's a lower cost option. It's a huge 75% off special in June for $607. It is eight days and standard online posting for 30 days.
For June order.
This is the one you just sent me today. Maybe he's going to honor that rate. Does it have today's date, or do you meant July? Anyway, so for $607, quarter, uh, 124th page ad for eight days, online posting for 30, including the Job Network Career Reilders and pushes to other websites with performance boost priority search. This is that one, $607.
Do they charge, Nikki, by the word?
Generally, yeah. It's the size of the ad.
I was thinking of possibly shortening our ad and then just putting in there for a complete job description and application called on file.
Yeah, I did that with several of them because I thought there was a lot of redundancy in there and almost too much description. So this is a 124th page ad, which, you know, is size-wise, basically, we would cut the verbiage down 'cause I guarantee ours isn't gonna fit in that. Then the Oregonian, which is only published on Sundays.
Really?
In the state of Oregon, I believe. Fridays, sorry. Or they were only posting this for Friday. I don't, I thought for some reason it was only sent out once. Let me, let me Google it. But the rate that I got from her is, because we got a pretty hefty one and I asked for a cheaper one. The original quote was $2,000.
Hmm.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think it's one on Sundays, but for, does anybody know on Oregonian? I can't remember.
I think it's a daily paper.
It's a daily paper. So the big one is on Sundays.
I think Safeway gets it a day later.
That is it.
They still do it.
If it got posted there once before and it was over $600.
That is extremely, extremely good.
For only three times.
So for two Sundays and 30 days online is $1,400. And that's one of the, the cheaper one is $1,100. And that is a smaller ad. So it's, that's only two days though, the good sources, for $1,163. And that's pretty spendy. Amazing.
What about Medford and Roseburg?
I did not get a quote back from Medford yet. I don't feel, I think this one is...
Because those is the highest one down the rating.
Capital Press is still working on it. That was a big one that we talked about. Are we doing Capital Press, which is the ag magazine? So for two weeks, $145. That includes...
I think Medford's already done.
You guys already did Medford?
I think I did Medford. I'm pretty sure I did.
So for two weeks printed on Fridays is Capital Press and Idaho-only ag ad. And then also the online is $145, three weeks, $162, four weeks, $175. So Capital Press is fairly reasonable, but it is published once a week on Fridays. And the last, oh, last one we talked about was OCCMA, the Oregon City and County Managers Association. And it's $20 for 30 days for us since we are members of LOC. All right, put that on there for 90 days. You just, is that on LOC?
Yes.
Okay, so in addition, we have, LOC will put it on OCCMA for us for an additional $20 for 30 days.
Oh, okay.
Because we're members, but they will do it for us if we request it.
Okay. So I only did it on LOC then, I apologize.
I think OCCMA is, to me, an easy decision. That's 20 bucks for 30 days. We don't have to do much more than call LOC.
Money.
To me, that would be easy. But that's, that's the breakdown of the, the only one I did not get is monster.com.
Everybody got Reading too. Did you guys see Reading?
I thought we decided not to do Reading because...
Yeah, she wasn't here at that meeting.
No, but I was just throwing out there that we have done Reading too, just so that...
And that was like $1,200?
$1,200 for 30 days and that does the pop-ups. Like when people go look up a clothing ad, our pop-up of Town Manager pops up. Sorry, I thought it was good, but...
So we just need to make a decision what direction we want Jeff to advertise and then to get those out there more. Is it a consensus on OCCMA? For $20?
I like that one.
I could, yeah.
I'm cheap. And what'd you say Capital Press posted?
For two weeks is $145, three weeks is $162, and four weeks is $175. So it's like...
That's cheap on market.
It's a pretty, it's, well, it's only published, oh, I guess we're only published once. Yeah, it's pretty cheap, I mean, it's pretty affordable. Definitely is the, um, market that we're kind of tuning. I'm not opposed to the Capital Press, I feel like that's a pretty reasonable price.
See, what is, what is their old news charge?
I, that Herald News, I do not, um, that was famous, right? That was almost $700 for three times.
It's spendy.
Yeah, that's spendy.
And then, of course, there's always the social media and radio. But I'm not sure what our area market would be mine for those.
I don't know.
Does Ontario have a paper? Did you?
I've looked at Burns or, I don't know.
Burns, looking for one too, so...
Yeah, I know, but Ontario's a little bit bigger than...
Yeah. Let me see what their...
You know, Ontario paper would cover, cover in the southern Washington.
That would cover Vale and that, you know, Mountain County.
They're the...
Cover, a lot of people say.
Argus Observer, does that sound right?
Yes.
The Argus Observer for Ontario. Yeah, I haven't looked into that one.
I don't know the name of the paper.
Yeah, we could, I mean, that would be...
I think that, that area is something we should take...
We're probably gonna look at the same rates as roughly as over here, which is roughly $50, I think, for a couple days.
They'll get that clip of Baker City and, I don't know. And then back, you'll probably end up over to Idaho with it also.
Yeah, 'cause it's right on the line.
Yeah, they're right on the border.
But do we have the same issue there that we had with Reading with the California-Oregon laws versus...
Yeah, they're different.
I mean, well, we're gonna get somebody from out of state, I think they can run the law.
We, we didn't...
We've had out-of-state apply before.
And, you know, it's a, a learning curve.
Yeah.
Right, but still, I think, you know, even if somebody's from out of state, may not be all that bad, does well.
But I think, I think we should just pick about five of them and go with it.
Yeah. What do you guys think about the Indeed? Have you ever used Indeed?
I've hired from Indeed.
I mean, that's five, we could do $25 for a week. Have you used it?
Yeah.
I don't think that's a...
I've hired...
No, that's cheap.
I've hired about six people off of Indeed.
Is it N, like N is a...
They're, they're...
Indeed, I, N.
I just wanna make sure I wrote it right.
Sounds like we've worked through this.
That will require somebody who put in a card online, so after that point...
I can do that.
So it's like, they all be reimbursed.
Certainly, I've hired...
I don't even know, I mean, maybe try two weeks and see what kind of response. So they give you estimates on how many people you should be able to reach and it was like four to 20 or 14 to 20 or something like that. So, I mean, heck, if we had 40 people, what...
You know, I was extending, I started two weeks, but two weeks will need.
Yeah, I think that's enough to start with. What about when you had to replace it?
And I cut that one down as well to directly to adjust the page pretty much a few...
There's that nickel paper in Clamath Falls.
We get it here.
Your own newspaper, they have to do.
I think it's its own thing.
But do they have...
Classifieds, yeah, they have the help on its section.
Do they? It goes all over the state.
Oh, yeah, the nickel paper's not just... But isn't it geographical for...
Do Clamath Falls publish?
Standard type.
Because they had it in the out-up and, I'm more of a...
I think it's a different nickel up there.
Okay.
Yeah, which is regional.
Yeah, so that's, that's no bad idea.
They offer nickels.
I'll write that down to find out some prices, but what about doing Capital Press since that is fairly cheap? I mean, that's a couple hundred dollars.
I don't have a problem with that one.
Does it, Idaho? And online?
Yeah, I think Capital Press would be good.
Do you want to do two weeks, three weeks, four weeks?
How much is it a week?
$145 for two weeks. It's, uh, 20 bucks more for three and 20 bucks more, or 10 bucks more about that for...
Let's start with two weeks and then just like, we need to extend it. Two weeks with Capital Press.
And then maybe reaching out to some of these smaller ones. I still have not gotten any answers from this agenda. That's fine. So I'll keep working on that one. But I think that was about it.
Can we post it at KCC?
Yes, we'd love that. Work source for KCC. And Clameth, if you, if we get ahold of them, I have the gal's card. They will post it at their office as well, at the work source. And, yeah, since we don't really have one right now. Yeah, as far as I can. Okay? That was easy. All right, that's all I have on that.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on that? Okay. Last one from that one goes lodging tax. You see Nikki's put together a packet here.
I still have, um, sorry. If you guys want one of these packets, just sample sheets, we can make more copies eventually, but I don't have... It's okay.
And I looked at this and pretty much all the applications are pretty close to this one.
Well, Nikki's doing that, can I, can I ask a question if you cancel? Who are the town that will actually maintain our website?
I'm trying.
So is it, is it a job description you're doing?
No.
So, so it's not anyone's job description, but it's been assigned to you and knowing that, that the job poses itself to, yeah, it's kinda search for, seems like on a website even, and...
Well, what I can do is call the girl that actually put our website together and ask her to, if she can just move it to where it...
Yeah, this is a homepage. It needs to be on the homepage somewhere. So, yeah, just keep her ringing. There's a lot of desires still on the website. I understand it, but another assignment that has been made without really a whole lot of direction there, so, um, I think...
That'll be easy, I can have her do that, not a problem.
Yeah.
Is it Victoria?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It'll be super simple.
She runs our entire website. She updates absolutely everything that we tell her to. So I don't know if you guys are on that same plan, but it frees up...
Is it a $100 a month one?
No.
Oh, so you... That's probably why.
It's $800 a month. But we have a bigger website that has more, but we figured it out once, the amount of stuff that we actually have her do besides all of the website stuff that she does for us. She makes less than $10 an hour for what we pay her a month. So it's really when you work it out to how much stuff you can actually give her, 'cause she does a ton of marketing stuff, that's her job. She markets like crazy.
That'd be, would be the way to go there.
Well, we've got a lot to discuss on the website thing eventually, 'cause there's...
That's for another date. I just, needs to be more up front, like on the homepage or...
Like a big...
Easy to find, 'cause I know I'm being, you know, a lot of people use, you know, their phones to get their web information.
She could put it up pretty quick if you just tell her to put it up on the homepage.
So, let, um, we'll come back. I'm texting her right now. Um, do you guys want me to kinda go over my questions or what is in my thought process with this package that we have here? Or are you tired of listening to me go ahead?
Well, okay, so this is where I'm at. I, first of all, I don't wanna put the packet together. I got it yesterday, I think maybe some of the other people got it yesterday. So I have not, I've had zero chance to look at it yet. So I'm not really prepared yet to make any changes to what we've already discussed on what we agreed to as a kind of a procedure, not a major procedure, but kind of a council discussion three months ago roughly, when we, you know, got rid of the committee and then, you know, adopted some materials that, that Robert at that time shared with us that were examples of applications and, you know, kind of, you know, checklist of things that applicants go through, fill out. Then turning to her, then, then our decision at that time, three months ago roughly, was to then review the materials that got given to us to... Because apparently that stuff's nowhere to be found at the moment, so we'll, we'll keep looking and searching for it. And I think that, maybe we've already got, we all have the agreement that the rule for applications itself, but then a lot of what I think you prepared is more of what we can use the money's for and all that kinda stuff. So, um, at our last meeting, I kind of, you know, I think for last few meetings, I've been kinda saying that I really, you know, want to, to respect the requests that have come in and give them more discussion, but at this time, I think we're really still on this. We need to figure out where we're at on the budget. We also got given through this week, an audit from year ending 2000, fiscal year 2017-18 in, you know, June of 2018. So, you know, we're going to, once we get that kind of, you know, our minds around what that really says in the audit, we'll be able to have a better understanding of where we're at moving forward in a budget that, you know, we've adopted, you know, for this next fiscal year, this fiscal year we're in. You know, we need to make sure that it's actually, you know, current with what our beginning fund balances are. Um, I'm very keenly aware and very, it's all opposed to me when I, when I look at what's happening in Harnett County with a financial crisis, even asking for the state to come in and audit them because they began many years without a correct audit.
That's not on our agenda.
No, but what I'm, what I'm saying is that...
Where are we going with it?
Where I'm going with that is that change, you know, going, spending money without fully knowing what we have is, is something that I'm not prepared to do. And we just got this, all our boxes, which didn't come in what we thought it was gonna come in. So we, we overprojected revenue and, or less than what we thought we had. And so, you know, I, I don't wanna get into a situation where we've done this multiple times on multiple accounts and then are really scrambling to find money that we don't have. And then even spending the 30%, which is already allocated into funds, we're not talking about the 30, we're gonna be talking about the 70 eventually.
That's what this is, I said.
Yeah, and so, you know, it looks like we've got some money to start off the year with 'cause we haven't spent a lot of it, we know that. But at the same time, you know, are we deficient in other areas that...
Well, I've looked at this booklet and I had actually, while I was at home for a couple of weeks come the last night. The city of the enterprise has, and they all seem to kinda follow the same guidelines with, with these, the program guidelines, and some are longer than others. This one has an application that's like three pages. And so I think we just need to decide, and, and it has also the deadlines that people need to apply, like they have twice a year, applications have to be made before that deadline for the next six months. So, you know, that's, those are the things I think we need to consider. And some of, some of these are pretty much the same as probably applications. And they're all, you know...
I like the three-page, 'cause some of those are pretty lengthy in there. I'm not, but I'm looking at it.
We can make copies of it after this, but I just ran it for myself for those.
That's the biggest thing, is we just need to establish guidelines and we can address those other ones after, in the next meeting, or we can, or we need to establish our guidelines, whether or not we have like $100,000 or $25,000, we need to establish our guidelines and put them, we need to do a resolution with them eventually. One of the number one things is, you know, what we need to use the funds for. And then also like...
And state law tells us what we can spend it for.
Yeah, we can just narrow it down more specifically.
So it's not like we can just say what we want to spend it on, it has to be within those deadlines.
We can just narrow it down a little bit more.
We can make it easier to meet with them.
Yeah, we can also say we're gonna only spend 30% of that on advertising, 30% on, you know, facilities is what we, we need to dictate. But also, like Sandy said, and I've read in several of these, I don't know why, it appeals to me to do a once-a-year, twice-a-year review deadline, because that means we're only having to do this once or twice a year.
We don't, we don't have to do it...
Every council meeting.
Every council meeting.
And doing, you know, like a...
'Cause, you know, we know when certain events are gonna happen, for the most part. And so, um, if you want funding, then...
Yeah, we need to come in and get an application and... So is that something that appeals to you guys, is doing twice-a-year?
I like twice-a-year.
And doing something like, what, maybe an... April...
I have no problem doing quarterly. I think twice-a-year, you know, some groups don't meet all that often, and so twice-a-year may... And I, I don't want this to be only a few people know about it, so, I mean, the more we, you know, put this out there is fine with me too. Four times is not terrible.
No.
Quarterly, you know...
So we would have...
Yeah, that was a great guidelines. I mean, if you're dropping down notes, I mean...
Yes, we're gonna have to write it down.
So when we talk about a resolution in the past guidelines, I mean, any notes you're taking down, things that we, in this work session agreed to, we can send to Jeff Hedler and have him dropped up. I'd say this is kinda where we're going.
So March, June...
Quarterly's one.
August... No, or September, wait, yeah. September and December, first of the month, 31st of the month? First of the month, they all have the first.
Oh, deadlines for, yeah, yeah, December, what is that, September?
December.
June and April.
March, June, September, December. And the first of the month?
And then, yeah, and then the next, I don't know, one more council meeting, we're reading the month. If we're ready, only have a couple, then we're getting the next meeting.
Well, if you don't...
Application deadline, but it might not be...
Yeah, if you don't get it in by March 1st, then it would fall till the June 1st, which is...
So you're gonna do the first of every month?
No, the first of March, June, September, and December would be the...
The first of each quarter.
Applications, desert...
And if we have the applications, we can consider it one or two meetings if we need to. And then make a decision, but...
Yeah, you have this time to go over it.
And so we'll put those as such as, and I'll try, I mean, I'm sure Jeff will... Can I, like an April suggests that you were instead of March?
Why?
Just because Irish Days is big.
Yeah, but they could, they could file for that in Florida before.
Oh, that's true.
'Cause it's gonna go...
I get what you're saying.
So one of the, one of the policies that ought to be clear to people, we can review past expenses too. That's, you know, it's already happened, it's ongoing.
Some of these applications do have a form they have to return after the event.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And I think that's a good idea too, because...
A follow-up form?
Right.
Especially if there'll be follow-up requests for the same event.
Yeah, but after, so, you know, that we don't...
There's several of them.
That the money we appropriated went to where it was, they said it was going.
One of the other things was, do we wanna do matching? Do we wanna have a minimum? One of the things I thought about was, do we wanna say a minimum of $1,000 because we don't wanna look at every two, $300 request, but they get, you know, a $1,000 request? We want a maximum, we wanna require matching. Yeah, that's a good question.
Is, is that legal rule?
Yes.
It is.
Yes, that's, there's tons of them in here. Yeah, yeah, I totally...
Yeah, I haven't, I, I just, that for you, I haven't.
Yeah, oh, that's right.
So, yeah.
So do, you know, do we wanna, we can have two levels. We could have one where it's not a matching grant and it's under 10 grand. Or, you know, if it's over 10 grand, we want a matching grant. You know, because if somebody's gonna ask for a $25,000 grant, you should hope they're putting in at least 50% and stay in, or, you know, maybe more.
Yeah. You know, part of that's gonna depend on how many we, we get, but we need to make a decision to begin with and then if it isn't working, then we could change it down the line.
So no matching maybe right now, or?
I'm not sure about the matching, you know, they...
I think to start to get the program out there, we should do a non-matching, because a lot of people don't know about the program yet.
True.
And then we could look at it at the end of the year.
And see how it's really benefiting now.
And that's why this will be, I think, something that develops over time too. I mean, we may start off with some, you know, guidelines, bases.
Yeah, we may have to change it as we...
Yeah, it'll be something that says, you know, this is working, this is working. I appreciate the committee idea for that, that I, you know, doing that work too, but... And we may wanna reform the committee after a little while.
Or, or have an in-house committee of two people and the town manager.
Yeah, absolutely. Might be a liaison position that goes over that.
So that's just to review and see if there's questions before it comes before the council.
Do we want maximum to minimums?
So the materials you put together, you spent some time on. Are, is there examples of other communities of our size?
Yeah, yeah. So if you go to Jacksonville's, obviously, Baker City, probably, probably very similar to us, the second tab. And theirs is an application, it's just three pages long, so it's not super bad. But there basically, there says that their program, grant program is promoting economic vitality in Baker County. And then it's open to all individuals, businesses, or organizations in Baker County. So that's another thing is, you know, you wanna put something like that in there. This event should, and the criteria, theirs is, the event should be a multiple-day event with a proven track record for enhancing the food retail and lodging revenues. So, you know, we could say a one-day event, I'm not sure we would really, in my mind, I can imagine asking for multiple days.
It's hard to do multiple...
Yeah, yeah. Ground, ground like there's a multiple day.
But I would think of...
Occupy U Street's not, I mean, there's a lot of...
Occupy U Street was two days this year for an entire...
Yeah, so we could say the event should be at least a one day, you know. But it says, the event should contain all areas of Baker County.
Is that a county?
This is a county one, yeah. So they, but they didn't come in till after the laws changed the...
Right, but what I'm saying is, we, you know, we don't wanna advertise... Right, but what I'm saying is, we, you know, we don't wanna advertise it throughout the county.
Well, we could, we have the right to do that, I mean, there's no restrictions. We need to make a decision if we want it to be a Lakeview specific or a county specific. That's a big, that's one of the big questions, I think, is how specific do you want it to be? Because, you know, we have requests from obviously the county, yes, there are county funds that...
Because they have these incidents in Paisley and Christmas Valley and...
Well, yeah, and that's the thing is, we, the county, the county has money for that very same thing. They have money as well, I mean, they have, theirs is first, you know, method or any...
Oh, while the county takes their lodging debt money and just gives it to the chamber?
No, it's not just the chamber.
It's not just the chamber. But we get, we get a big, we get a big portion of it, but it goes to North Lake.
Do they allow people to ask for additional funds for the, so what do they do with that extra money?
Well, we asked...
I have it for you guys if you guys need that.
Yeah, we asked, you can go to the county and ask for funds, it just comes out of a different pot. But I think for, just if you want my opinion, probably not, but for, if it, if it helps enhance, if it helps bring tourists to Lakeview hotels, that may, you know, I mean, like Roundup or Ski Hill. Ski Hill's not in city limits, but they have no other choice really but to stay in Lakeview, so it's...
Well, same with Paisley, if they're going to Paisley, they gotta come to Lakeview to stay.
Yeah, so if you can...
They have, they have some of those.
They have some places, but, but if you can, if it's a, an event that benefits, because the whole idea of the tax is to keep it going, keep it getting bigger and bigger and bigger, filling your hotels and your hotels and your hotels and your hotels. So if it's benefiting the, in city limits, your hotels, then I would say, you know, if it's not benefiting your hotels, then, or your economy, I mean, if they're not... Yeah, if they're not shopping, that's why we had to get rid of festival free flight. They weren't shopping here, they weren't spending money here, they don't stay in hotels, they don't get food here, they don't do anything here. So it wasn't, it wasn't boosting our economy, our tourism funds, it wasn't, it wasn't helping the town at all. It was just us spending money on people that didn't spend money back. So you have to kind of look at, I mean, I would look at it that way. You want that revenue to keep coming.
Well, you could do a radius too.
Well, as I said, because that would be really tough to say Lake County and have Christmas Valley, as much as, you know, that is a county.
But you could do a twenty-mile radius around Lakeview.
But it should touch, yeah, your hotels, your lodging.
Because anybody that's within twenty miles of town is gonna come stay in Lakeview.
I just think that's probably the best way to do it.
Do a radius.
Yeah, yeah. Because they, you know, perhaps no, Ski Hill's open.
Yep.
Going through this, everyone has what it can be used for and what it can't be used for.
Yeah.
And their, and their priorities and their limitations, yeah.
Some of them are the same, some of them are not.
Well, like, one of the things is they bring up, a lot of them do separate marketing from the tourism funds themselves. So if you have a marketing fund request, it's separate versus other uses such as events or...
Special events.
Yeah, twenty-mile radius of town halls.
Oh, it's twenty, yeah, twenty-mile.
No, the city limits.
City limits?
County limits.
Yeah, oh, yeah, for a town. Twenty-mile radius of town.
That covered a lot of area too.
Of Lakeview, does that get, see enough, it's tough because like Adel, I feel like is...
Within Oregon, I guess you could say.
Well, it's tough though, because Adel's further than twice a county.
Yeah.
Oh, so twenty-mile radius of town limits of Lakeview and within the county of, like, within the county. Yeah, because New Pine Creek's not that far, huh?
Yeah.
Or should you do the urban development?
Well, that would include the urban development.
Yeah, it's not that much.
And it includes, it sounds twenty miles.
Basically only affects the south side, I think, more than anything, and within, within Lake County. Yeah, the Bay...
We want to be semi.
Well, that's why I was like, we better get specific, because that wouldn't make sense. We need to think about, you know, what, we want to put restrictions on facilities and events. Most of these are facilities and events. I don't know if there was, I don't remember seeing any that were not facilities and events, but city of Newburgh, there's the fifth tab.
Well, on this sheet that I have, I don't know if you remember this, it says grant classifications, community projects, county projects, economic development, special events, community improvements, tourism promotion, tourism promotion agency, tourism-related facility. I mean, so, those are some of the...
Yeah, we can put...
Things that they allow, I guess, here.
So here's one that says types of projects, programs, or events to be considered. And it says, projects, programs, or events which generate or encourage overnight stays in Newburgh, or events that increase visitor spinning. The enhanced, I'm gonna probably cut, enhanced shoulder and off-season visitation, create unique wine country, we don't have that. And then activities ineligible general administrative membership fees, project programs, or event promoting tourism outside of Newburgh. So Newburgh doesn't include the county because of the fact that they're right off the board, I would assume. Used as a match for other city of Newburgh funding awards. That's probably a good one to make sure we put in there, that they can't be like competitive city fund matching. Salaries, operating costs, travel mileage, architectural engineering studies, apparel, or advertisements in Newburgh or C D C C, brochure, local chambers, commerce publications, and local publications that are not distributed at least fifty miles outside of Newburgh. That's a good one, something that reaches further outside than, um, maybe?
That's a, that's a good one.
That is pretty, yeah.
Yeah, you don't want to pay for people to advertise in the examiner.
Yeah, I mean, as much as other examiners, if it's a purpose, yeah.
But it's not gonna generate any stays, hotel stays. So if you're funding, you know, half of a Sunset Magazine ad that, you know, someone's doing for the whole, you know, a roundup or something like that, then that's gonna reach way outside of Lake County, gonna generate more hotel stays.
Do you guys like the idea of adding in there as disallowed?
Yeah, number eleven is more clear.
Number eleven? Okay. Which is the...
But all that, the whole list is like...
It's not bad.
Yeah, more, when we're talking about tourism and, and what, where these bodies actually come from.
It's not five, and you said one more page after that. Right at the very top, that list of ineligible, and the page before is their eligibility requirements, which I actually like minus the wine country experience, because we don't have that really. No shortage in that. Is, um, Strager's in Oregon or is it out of Oregon?
It's in Oregon.
It's in Oregon.
It's in California.
It's in California.
It's in California?
Yeah.
No, they're always...
It's passed in Pine Creek.
Oh, it is passed in Pine Creek.
It's...
Yeah, that's right, because I talked to all tourists in Newburgh, yeah.
It's across the street.
It's true, yeah, that's...
So, yeah, we definitely wouldn't, that wouldn't apply for us then.
Yeah, I like that one.
Of the eligible and ineligible, yeah, I think it's pretty good. I mean, I know that, yes, there are areas where some of those could fall under, but it's a lot of time and effort for us to stack all that.
Eligible applicants?
Is there anything that you think on that list is not?
It's appropriate, I guess.
Except for number three, because obviously we're talking, so it would be project programs or events promoting tourism outside of Newburgh. Are we setting specific of outside of Lakeview? That we wouldn't include for that, number three, so...
Oh, I went back to Paige's.
That one we would probably need to adjust, everything.
Yeah.
So we need to probably...
Because we're doing stuff outside of county.
So we wanna do our twenty-mile...
Yeah, because they still have to stay, I mean, the fund is built up by people staying in hotels.
So we would have to add that twenty-mile.
Within Lakeview, yeah, so, yeah, if they go up to the Ski Hill, there's a tourism event on Ski Hill.
That's where we'd add that.
Yeah, so if we put project programs or events outside of the twenty-mile radius of the city limits, the town limits of Lakeview.
No, they don't.
Yeah, and not within the county.
Yeah, definitely kind of off the county line.
Yeah, because that technically puts us in the child county.
And then, kind of that New Pine Creek, well, parts of it are, but what it is on the south side of New Pine Creek. So the twenty-mile would cover, things happen, right, in New Pine Creek.
Yeah.
And those kind of would stay here compared to going over to...
I don't think there's a whole lot of events going on there, but...
I don't know if that's a good one.
You just never know though. I mean, seriously, like, you never know what, I mean, there could be this huge festival that, you know, or whatever with...
Which would bring them here, probably.
I don't know, maybe where in Adel could we stay, huh?
I mean, you could do like a, or, or determined by case-by-case basis.
What about?
Or Cambridge, huh?
What about the, um, the Wheat House, where's that, Incineland?
That's a fine, yeah.
That's one in Pine Creek.
Plus there's some campsites and stuff.
Yeah, but that's, that's a one.
So how far is, um, how far?
That's just a privately owned business.
How far do they go, from here?
How much is it? It's about forty miles.
So keep Adel out.
Well, Plush is about forty-five miles, I think.
Adel has its own motel.
Yeah, what does the Lakeview just have?
It just has a bunkhouse.
They have M C days up there.
Eleven rooms.
There you go.
How many is eleven rooms?
But we've got the dark sky designation going in.
And, and I would say that these can be, you know, these are our guidelines, and then there can be exceptions if brought to us.
We could do the twenty-mile radius and also include Plush and Adel.
Yeah, because we have the dark sky designation going in, which will highlight mainly Plush. But it's on, it'll be the only one in Oregon, and so it could bring tons of tourists. That would overflow at certain times of, that would overflow into...
Yeah, so, these are guidelines.
My thought is I don't wanna scare off somebody in those areas thinking they can request it, but would it, you know, be an oddity to put, and it's like a Plush, you know, areas?
Just say with consideration given to other events.
Yeah, yeah.
Within the county.
Within the county, yeah.
And within the county.
So there is an RV park in Adel.
Yeah, and they believe that it's open to do anything with it.
There's an RV park in Adel, and then there's the bunkhouse that has eleven bedrooms, but they're, you know, it's a, it's all in one building, it's not like outside entrances or anything like that. In Plush, there's the Wheat House which can sleep four, there's the Heart Mountain Cabin which can sleep four, and then they have one RV spot, and then there's a bunkhouse in Plush.
That's not gonna be money to our motels if they're...
Well, I'm just letting you know how many are there, there's not enough, is basically what I'm saying. So if there's something going out there, because there's people that stay here in Lakeview all the time that, that are sun-stoning out there, or hunting or whatever, because they don't have any place to stay.
And M C Day, there's a lot of people that come in from out of town that stay in Lakeview, they go to M C Days and they go.
And that's where this is, I would say, you know, maybe the ratios might be something that we would consider, okay, well, we won't do full funding of what the request is, but we do fifty percent. So it's just on a case-by-case, I think, thankfully the fund is big for our county, and hopefully we'll be able to find a lot of different projects in and outside of county.
Right.
Ten minutes, so.
The order of the analogues is, is in Plush, and it has quite a bit of, a lot of people come the night before and stay in Lakeview restaurant.
Does that bring in people from out of town?
Yeah, they had three hundred...
And I know it's a big event, I just didn't know it was all over.
They had three hundred and fifty this year.
People would not stay.
They had people, I've got some good friends that go up there, they had people from New Mexico, Texas, Louisiana, I think there was some people from Florida this year that showed up out there.
Maybe forty to fifty people from Lakeview, the rest of them are all from everywhere.
How many do you think are involved?
Pardon?
How many people do you think are involved?
So normally they have...
No, no, just total, not just...
It used to be five hundred.
So normally they have over five hundred, this was a down year, where they had just about three fifty. I talked to Larry earlier today, and, but they also don't advertise, it's kind of a secret society thing, so...
You gotta belong to yourself.
But you have to pay, and there's no women allowed, and I don't know anyone that wanna go.
No women, you wanna be there or allow them?
No, no women allowed.
I mean, that's probably not bad.
Yeah, but, but it is highly marketable, I mean, the elves and eagles wanna help, so we'll be marketing that a little bit more on that end.
So, yeah, options, I think this has got a lot of options, I'm gonna go through it and highlight some more. Definitely needs some fire.
I think the big things we need to consider are, do we wanna break it into percentages? And what do we wanna set as our guidelines for uses? I mean, if we like this here...
Newburgh has a really good...
It's very vague to me, I think this one, I don't know, maybe look at some of the others.
I don't wanna paint everybody in the same box, I mean, yeah, I think, the main thing is, yeah, tourism, I like their eligible applicants, I mean, yeah, that's a good...
So that's another thing, yes.
That one I think is really key.
Which one is that one, Nora?
That same page on, um, Newburgh.
On tab four or...
Tab five.
Tab five. And it was the page that had the type of projects allowed, and up, further up that page, it says eligible applicants.
Yeah, eligible and not eligible funding.
Um, you know, this would be eligible applicants, include the entity, not the topic.
Can you insert some wire and insert up there?
Okay, if I can't row, speaking to you all down here, I'm not sure number one.
Yeah, I've never seen one of those throw on a page.
We did.
So, but, so I, I mean, Newburgh obviously probably tailored theirs off of other communities and such too, so I think we should start with Newburgh one as a base and then just...
So we like this.
Get this in word, maybe we can have to...
I can kinda get things super easy.
So I think we start from there, start works method to put in our names and things, and then do it, and then just bring out just, and then if you find some others. I think we'll go through the rest of this and kind of, I'll continue to do more after.
You might have a work section, I'm assuming.
You might share your enterprise application real quick.
Yeah.
I'll photocopy it real quick. Where's my paper?
You just gotta know where the secret's at.
Well, I love it, I can find it in there.
And that one's pretty neural too, I think, because I like...
Kind of like this Newburgh one.
Baker's County, because it's a walk-on three-page, and I like that, the shorter version. I don't...
I know she didn't go in the office, so she's in the closet then. She went, you got the closet.
She went in the closet.
We thought you were confused and went out the wrong room.
No, I closed it still, like, to make you know where it was.
I know. Anyone else?
I would just stay in there the rest of the meeting.
Well, let it over there in the closet.
I'm not coming out.
We'll have to keep a high note, I don't think.
Not about it. Anyways, I like the idea of short application.
Short one?
Yeah, I like the shorter.
The short.
The enterprise one, Tillamook's is...
The enterprise one is three pages.
Newburgh's is lengthy.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Well, look at that enterprise one, I thought it was fairly good and comprehensive.
I don't, I think no more than three pages max.
Baker, um...
I mean, yeah, this one is pretty...
Let's do like a sixty-page application.
Baker County's is really...
I like the question, but it's not something that is asked.
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's got a lot. I mean, I think obviously we wanna ask...
It's a simple contract kind of thing.
Okay, so there's covers for the small grant is a one. That's only, oh, I don't know, like a budget summary, organization budget, and project narrative, that's a bit much.
That was K, I said a sixty-page.
So I like the first three pages.
Yeah, there's still a few about the, just, something, I think that's what the whole, overall, a lot of people feel something, so.
And I believe... Small grant program reports, oh, there's their follow-up program report. And then there's the contract.
And sample contract's interesting too, I mean, if this is a, you know, awarded like a grant, people are applying, you know, multiple people, we're only funding certain people, you know, justification for only funding certain projects. Did you notice in here too, that it seems like they're only doing twenty thousand... Did you notice in here too, that it seems like they're only doing twenty thousand a year possibly?
Some of these, yeah.
So they must be spending, it'd be nice to know what they're spending the rest of their seventy on, because if they're only funding these small grants.
So I, I did research that.
They're probably pushing it out.
They do a visitors association, Newburg, I can't remember, there's a lot of them, but, um, most of these have visitors association. They have park money dedicated, just straight out park money, um, percentages. Albany has.
So they're taking some of the seventy to put it towards their parks? See, that's, that's the break, I think would be really nice to see with how other counties are spending, or communities are spending their money on counties, like cities. Because we get told, oh, you can't spend it here, you can't spend it there, but it's like, if they are, and they are, and they are, and they are, and we want to, we better, and we should. I mean, like, our parks could definitely use an upgrade and seventy percent would be real nice.
I mean, the whole thing, all of it's based on the state law.
And it's allowed, so for example, Albany's.
It's allowed, but you, you need to read that one.
I know, and so that's why I think it'd be nice to set the cap at like, uh, you know.
Thirty percent.
Yeah, all the seventy, we're only going to do, yeah, maybe twenty-five percent or something.
So Albany alone has theirs dictated forty percent, and it's Albany's visitor association, the city trolley, Monkeith House, Northwest Art and Air Festival. They even use it for their Veterans Day parade, which, you know, we could use, we have two parades, right?
That would be nice for the Labor Day parade, because the chamber pays for all the trophies for that, just very expensive.
Is there only two?
Oh, that's of course going to be one, so that, I mean, that's where, like, yeah, doing this correlate and then doing a cap per quarter, you know.
I would love to see it used especially for, I mean, I'd love to see it for Veterans Day.
Each quarter, we would know how much money.
Because we look at our park budget as tiny, but we know that, ooh.
We know how much is going to be going out at a certain date.
So for your seventy percent, you need to come up with a process. There can be lots of different things in that process. You can do percentages of something every year is going to something. You can have thirty percent that's going to be a grants program. You can have fifty percent that's going to be dedicated to the parks or whatever. But you just, you, you need to do a process. Now, each one of these communities has that process already written. And that's what I think you, you know, the, like I said last meeting, the application is only the vehicle to get you through the grants or whatever you want to call it, the application, the ones that are going to do applications. You don't have to have applications for every, all of the seventy percent. So first you got to figure out your process for the seventy percent, then you're going to know, you know, then you're going to know. How to work that all out. And the other thing that I would like to say is that you already are committed by law to spend the seventy percent, no matter what your town budget condition is in. So there isn't, I don't think there's anything keeping you from dealing with this process and getting it on the road. I don't mind, you know, I mean, obviously, we've talked about eventually doing a splash pad. You know, that's probably going to need money that we're just going to have to, yes, I would love to see more grants and things like that, but we're going to have to definitely put some money there. I would love to see, and yes, it's been used time and time again by numerous towns with their splash pads.
Are those towns, is it, when the law took effect, because a lot of them have had this for a long time, like the county. So when the law, I mean, I would use your, you know, a lot of your, your out, you know, Orla, calling Orla and, and asking.
How can that work with these other communities?
You know, Newburg may have had theirs for a long, long time, and it doesn't.
I think there's a difference between people that had it between two thousand and three and those that have recently.
Yeah, so the recent ones.
They're all very, um, splash pads. They're all new, like.
Right, but it depends on when they started their lodging tax. If they started it before July first of two thousand and three, there are different variations.
I researched all of that, because I've read through their meeting minutes, their agendas, they're, watched their videos. They've all done it since, in the last couple of years with their renewed lodging tax money. Some of these towns just passed it right around the same time we did, maybe a year or two before. So, you know, or just put it towards parks, I think is huge. That is a big, um, area that, I mean, even our town parking lot is doing the Saturday market, and that is supposed to be tourism-related, and I would certainly love to see that grow, you know.
That's not for me and anyone out of town.
I know, and I would love to see it grow. I mean, I really would.
I would too. I mean, I'd love to see lots of things grow, but I'd love for you guys to, to just set aside, you know, like Roundup is your biggest hotel filler. Every single year, they fill your hotels. They absolutely fill them. They are all booked. And, you know, to help them with their advertising budget, they're advertising, they were just in the Ag Mac.
We have a proposal coming from the fair, from the fairground.
But like, they're going to ask you every year, so, I mean, that one, that one's just like a no-brainer to me, like, just give them.
Yeah, there should be X amount of dollars every year.
You know, and just, and just give that to them.
Well, and that's the thing is, what they talked about doing those set aside amounts towards organizations, the only issue I have with that is the overseeing of those plans. Is there's a lot of, we have to see that that was used correctly. Well, they have a report that, I'm sorry, yeah, no, I totally, I totally, I was talking about on our side.
Well, we talked about that a little bit earlier, that we do, everyone we get the money to, should turn in a report.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, that we need to be able to follow up, report with that, yeah.
Right, right, everything.
And those, those should be pretty easy. They'll probably spend it on the same advertising outlets each year, like Roundup will probably, you know.
Put.
Put.
Report after reading.
Put, you know, six thousand towards radio and, and whatever else. They'll prob, it's probably be the same thing. But we, since we get hotel, hotel tax funds from the county, we at any time could be audited by the county, and we're always aware of that. So we make it very clear of what we use our tourism tax money for, and what we use our membership money for. So that it's always at any time could be pulled and take, but we get a lot, so.
Well, and that's what we definitely need to.
But like Newburg tells you, if you don't spend it all in the proper area, you have to return that back to the town.
So this is maybe an option that we can look at is, we, we've done in the past, I mean, a year or so ago, we had a question about water quality and did a little survey, put a Google, or a survey monkey kind of thing out there. I think something like this might be an option that we ask people just in the community to fill out the survey and say, hey, what do you like us to spend the money on? You know, what do you like, do you spend here, here, or give them some options, or maybe you have some other ideas?
We have the same issue.
It'd be nice to see what the public wants.
We have the same issue with marijuana money.
Yeah, exactly.
Put a vote up there.
Be kind of nice to, yeah, put them, they can both, um.
And make it a little bit mixed, or at least the categories be under what can be used for.
Exactly.
So that's.
Yeah, narrow it down.
The police, can you use it for police?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's why I would say give them options, maybe another, love to fill in another, you know, part of an option. Can you add a question?
Yeah, it's not really a question. I was just going to say, I think that your thirty percent, that you can do whatever you want to with.
Right.
Is where you have the staff support to manage this. And I'm sure if you were to talk to some of these communities, that that would be the case, that they're using part of that. I mean, it wouldn't be a whole lot, but you do have to have some administrative time to manage all of this, so it seems like that would.
I actually think that could come out of the seventy.
It can. Oh, well then, then there's. We just need to make it as simple for us staffing-wise. Well, there's the form, but then there's the follow-up, like you were saying. But we definitely need to figure out what, so, you know, read through it some more, if you guys have some ideas of, um, I'm not opposed to doing a survey. I think that's a great idea, but that's why I put those surveys out there for the marijuana tax, because nobody's submitted them, and I thought maybe people would pick them up, but nobody really has. Uh, they say if we pass it. I'm agreeing.
Are, are we restricted to how that marijuana tax should be used?
I've looked up that there is no real restrictions. It's pretty common.
Water improvement.
It's pretty common for it to be used on police or anything like that. Yeah, or schools, um, school improvements, stuff like that.
The marijuana? Yes. Um, I think it was nine thousand dollars off the top of my head last report. But we have, we have to obviously figure out some number stuff, because the numbers we got today don't quite seem tight enough. In my opinion, because looking at what the county gets, which gets very similar to what we get, um, within a certain percentage.
Nine was the state revenue sharing for marijuana, and three, and three percent that we probably would give is five thousand if it's adopted.
And that was, that was from what June?
That's what we adopted as this budget fiscal year's projected revenue is five thousand bucks.
And it's higher than we anticipated already.
I had to wait for her to stop the printout, sorry. Because it was empty.
So, um, how hard is it to do those survey monkeys, Dawn?
I, I never did it. Shall we do that?
I think they're pretty simple. I might, oh, I did create one once, yeah, that's great. Um, I mean, if we want to.
We put together a survey.
And then also they have to advertise it on our water goals, which may or may not be possible now, but we think. On the water goal? That's how we got it down last night for it. It's really hard. We're going through on Facebook.
Yeah, you guys aren't utilizing your Facebook that much like you used to?
I just had a.
Um.
I gave Dawn.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, I've been. No, I, I sent Dawn, that was something I wanted to eventually talk to these guys, because I've been trying to put stuff out there more. Like, when you guys done some repairs, or, you know, the planters, or you guys got those awesome new covers, and so the public can see that.
Progress.
Being new, yeah, it's progress. But I know it's time-consuming. I would love to do it, but I'm sure my counties probably don't want me to do it. But, um, I'm really good these days.
So, so maybe it's more of a, you know, we only meet twice a month, but simple press release is simple, put together, and if we did content of a press release, shouldn't be that big a deal. And, you know, when, when we win, we get a full-time town manager in place again, that might be something we discuss with that manager, saying, hey, we want to be, let's, let's build up, you know, our PR with the community and, and really get some, you know, good spotlight on what we're doing here, and then just say, hey, we want to do it, and we're going to form a press releases on our website, but also maybe do the paper, which is simple.
Ray used to, Ray used to do some really good ones on the radio after every council meeting.
Well, and that's what I would love, is to have a very brief follow-up, or like, um, you know, obviously, we all talked about the elephant in the ring, and why was not the greatest last night? And to be able to go to people and say, hey, guys, we understand this is going on, maybe this is why, or, you know, whatever reason.
Well, I worked with Ray on the Mayor's Minute. That was really quite popular on Facebook when we did the Mayor's Minute. And it was once a month, and it was all positive information, just on, on Facebook.
I'd like to get back to doing that again.
I would like to see it as a town manager thing probably, but, or just a, any, anything, honestly, like.
Any transparency would be good.
Yeah, like when you guys had to take the tree out, because the sidewalk is getting completely destroyed, you know. Hey, guys, we're working on our sidewalks, because I know the public doesn't see it necessarily.
And just promoting some of the monies that we have available with businesses and.
The wood stove, honey.
Probably understanding the, you know, required amount, and sidewalks and stuff.
I do feel like that's probably going to be something hard until we get a town manager to do, but.
So what are the necessary things that you want on social media that are absolute mess, and that will make you a list?
I would love to see the meetings advertised on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
That used to happen.
It was, but it did, I just got busy.
And that's where, that's where I think there needs to be some flexibility, and we just need to ask legal counsel on, yeah, candidacy and liaisons on assignment. Because I, I understand staff is, you know, staff's got a lot to do, always does. And people come in, soak up your time when, you know, which is fine, we're here for the public, but I, you know, I've been grapping about the website way before you got put in charge of it. I mean, right as I first began the town council going, hey, I love my bio up there, if you really want it, I can give it to you in two seconds and put it up there. But, you know, it's like, you know, to, to be more, yeah, transparent, but also to show that, hey, this is who we are, this is what we're about, this is, you know, come to, you know, Lakeview and joy when we're here, we're, you know, we got a nice painting on a water tower that says we're like one of the best communities ever, and it's like, is that still, you know, the same feeling of everybody?
I want to type on the short bio of yourselves, and I'll get that off to Victoria, because she can post on there, and then I'll need to take pictures of you guys one day this week, and we'll get them on there.
Can we get a professional thing, I mean, no offense, but who's got the best phone?
Michael, Michael. They aren't that bad.
Well, my daughter's new phone, let me tell you, it makes everything pretty, so if we could have one of those, I would be over it more than that.
Oh, jeez. Yes, we. But seriously, I will, I will send all this stuff to Victoria and ask her to please get it on the website. So everybody can email me something, and then we'll get it done.
Do we need to check with Hedland about a social media liaison, because, you know, that's where the, um. My girl, I would be up here with that.
I think we need to put that on an agenda for the next.
No, no.
Okay.
Our work session.
So we'll do it two weeks from now.
I mean, you could utilize the chamber. Maria does it for higher members that aren't good at Facebook, or that don't have time, or that don't. It's part of our membership, membership as a higher level.
We're not a member technically.
You are. You are a member. You're an under fifty-dollar member. You're. One fifty, which is, which is totally fine, but if you do use some of that, you could, just, Dawn could email or, or, you know, whatever. Maria will put it up, that's her dumb. That's what we do for the, for the higher level memberships.
Oh, okay, so I'll put that down. Did you get that, Dawn, two weeks from now on the, um, no, not two weeks, I think it's, it's going to be in three weeks, but the next meeting? Can you put social media liaison assignments in Hedland, probably needs to be?
Well, he just seems to be asked to answer the personal survey and be the. Jeff, want to call and ask him a question?
Yeah.
As you.
What? Because I feel like we need to take some of this stuff off it. Good stuff.
That it?
Anybody have anything else?
So we will, people.
Follow-up.
And, and have another meeting two weeks from now.
Yeah, summarize, and then I don't think the only reason why you can't send a draft off to Hedland to have them look at. You know, the Newburg example, I think we're all pretty much in line with. Not the application.
Right, but look at the enterprise.
Look at the enterprise.
Enterprise one is just.
Yeah.
I will.
And it's three pages, and, you know, if there's any changes you want on that, or additions or subtractions or.
But I haven't, I think you'd be really nice to have a, a draft started, and you have to hold them, proceeds.
I would like the chamber to be considered if you are allocating some funds, because we have made, I mean, we've moved mountains really on tourism. I mean, we're ranked really high in Oregon on what we've done in Lake County, and it can be used for Lakeview specific. I mean, we have a lot more avenues to do for marketing and all of that stuff. I mean, we could work together on a lot of projects to specifically get out specific things.
Yeah.
That was also something that reminds me of, you know, allocating funds towards the town website and advertising tourism on the town for the town. Tourism related. And county, which is really hard.
That's where the percentage, that's where the percentage would be nice to, you know, get all or, you know.
Because, you know, if we're going to have a website, and they're going to advertise on our website Occupy East Street, and yes, I know the chamber does it, but we also need to focus on ourselves as well, is.
Do a upcoming event page on the website.
Yeah, and that would be something we use those funds for is to help manage. Or like, I was just having a conversation with somebody about, um, biking in town, and having, you know, not just the hills and, and things like that, but an in-town, more in-town bike route or road, road bike route that is not, you know, an event necessarily, but, you know, advertising stuff like that for people who are ready here perhaps for other things, you know, and that would be, I mean, not necessarily, we'd have to kind of look at the tourism aspect of it, but advertising more of our. advertising more of our tourism-related things within the town.
Because it doesn't get advertised?
Well, no, but it's our responsibility, it's a town, or I'd like to see that the town is taking ownership of some of their stuff and helping promote the businesses, you know, even our own, and I haven't looked at it, not looked at today, but like, a business catalog, I mean, I know we talked about doing a paper one, but, you know, having our registered, our businesses on there, places to eat and shop, or whatever services people are looking for, um, it'd be great to see on there as a town too.
And for you, it would just completely mirror the, the chamber's website.
Yeah, but you guys only do members, you don't do everybody.
Well, we have almost three hundred members, mostly, mostly the town.
You said you wanna do another session two weeks from now, from October, is that gonna be the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Well, it'll start at four, so what time you wanna start a work session then? Or do you wanna do a work session on the day before, or the, you know?
No, I need to do it on the same day.
Which works for, unflexible.
So technically, our next meeting will be three weeks from now, the thirteenth, because the. Yes, so, we could have a meeting sooner than that, I will tell you that the Tuesday, the sixth, is the marijuana thing in Ontario that. So if we did it.
Let's get through this first, and then worry about the, the other one, but if we do a work session two weeks from now, is that, that's what I'm asking, is that the same day?
Same day as the council meeting, yes.
No, it's not, that's three weeks from now.
Two weeks from now is the marijuana issue that we wanted, Scott was gonna attend in Medford and could not, it's in Ontario, and we wanna be sure that we're trying to get somebody there, but if we do a meeting that day, somebody from council or two of us may be gone.
I don't think that'll work.
That's why, I, I wanna go.
We could have a meeting on another day, to, if we can get this tax thing drawn up that fast.
Nobody watches the kids, no idea if the kids will be here on fire.
Well, we've got some time, we can always call a meeting quicker.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, if you can.
Well, we need to set a date.
Yeah, we can look at it, I mean.
We'll look at our calendars and we'll set a date.
Date, and I'm just unflexible, um, just let Dawn know what date, and she can post it.
Okay, we'll figure that out.
So, do you have anything else?
So when you post your dates for your meetings, where do you post them?
Well, it's always been the second and fourth Tuesday, if there's a.
No, but we're, we're out of there, they're doing something different, so how do we know?
We're gonna have a work session.
She does the same thing, she always does newspaper and notifies the media and radios.
I email all, I email.
And it's posted here.
All the radio stations, I email the newspaper, I email, um, all the commissioners.
And we're gonna start utilizing that Facebook again, I would, I could do it in Basecamp, I'm on there, but.
Well, I can have Victoria also add you in there, cause the Facebook is through our webpage.
Oh, okay. Because I, I understand what you're saying, is it's hard unless you happen to catch one of those, yes, I mean, she emails us, but that's because we're counselors, they can't actually mail.
Can you, can you put anybody on the mailing list, is the question?
Yeah, but only for just the agenda, they won't get the whole.
Yeah, well, that's okay.
That's okay, if it has a date and a timeline, and that's.
Put, put Ginger and.
Yeah.
And I can start in Basecamp, so I have to the, I'm not gonna be right to put it under the LCP, that little.
It's under Chamber. It's not that hard to do.
That we have going.
My email, Director Lake County Chamber.
I always have to search, Basecamp is a, I keep looking at just. Same that the chamber uses, and we've been using for Main Street E project type thing, and it's like a, what are we talking about? I don't know what you'd call it, I'm just.
So I just have one more thing, and I'm, you know, this, this isn't anybody's fault necessarily, I'm not pointing fingers, I wanna make sure that it's crystal clear, but today I was trying to understand, because when I was at the last work session, what time you were gonna, you were gonna have your meeting today. So when I called, it was afternoon, it was after twelve o'clock, and the phone rang and rang and rang and rang here, I have two phone numbers for town hall, so I called the other one, and it rang and rang and rang again. So I called Ray and asked him my question, and I let him, and he told me what time, verified it, and then I asked him, Eric told him about the phone ringing and ringing and ringing, and, and he said, well, you guys don't want to have just one person here in the office, which is completely understandable, I, I absolutely understand that, but there was no message machine, and I'm assuming that you have that capability with your phone system, I don't know, but it, for me, it wasn't that big a deal, I don't, because I know, I could call Ray, or I could get ahold of Darwin or someone. So I'm just saying that, I, you know, I don't know, maybe somebody else would have something that would even be close to an emergency, and they're calling, and they're just getting nothing, but it just rings and rings and rings.
If you're gonna, you're gonna close at lunch, they need to have an answering server saying that we are closing for lunch, leave a message, or if it's an emergency, they need to have an emergency call back. The town hall's gonna be closed during the day.
Maybe I was calling the wrong number, maybe it was set up.
No, it's happened about two.
And that would be something that you would probably have to, unfortunately, because we can't oversee schedules or what, but that would be a Jeff issue for now.
Okay, I mean, that's fine, I just wanna make sure.
We'd love to see a sort of a deep five.
Well, sure.
I don't even remember having an answering machine here.
I only have an answering machine for my air quality line, but we've never, ever, in the whole six years I've been here, have had a machine.
Wow.
There should be a directory too, like, I, I definitely hear what you guys are saying, I've called, everybody's called, and just not getting anybody.
Well, even when there's just two of us seeing.
And that's back when we had the full-time town manager, nobody's answering, somebody's.
The two lines, even if you're on them, should roll over to a voicemail.
Yeah, it'd be really nice to have a directory too, so that people don't just leave it all to one person.
New phone system, because these are Costco phones, and they're not gonna do any of that stuff.
So we should talk about that, and maybe it's, maybe.
Maybe it's tied up for.
And that's probably.
You need to get out of the forties and get into the two thousands.
But our IT guy might feel that on.
If they can figure those ones out.
No, no, I'm not talking about the current phones.
A new system.
Somewhere that what the county has.
It would be an electron, it would be a, like a cloud version, you, you use the same phones, but it's the method of how your phone lines are coming in, like, digital through Charter essentially. Now, we don't have phone lines like we used to, analog, I guess, so, you know, we look at.
And there's times where, when Tom is on the phone and I'm on the phone, you know, you're right, so we apologize. I do, I have gone back to caller ID and checked it.
Yeah, but you should know that, it should be, it should roll.
No, but I'm just saying that it's not that we don't try, which is, I already know about Ginger, because Ray called me.
If, in the evenings, if there's like a water line leak, does there not an answering?
They call dispatch, that's where all the emergency calls get directed to.
But see, they should know that by calling our, our town phones and going.
Yeah, if you have an emergency after hours.
Emergency, I don't know, if it's a water-related issue, call dispatch, if it's a, yeah. So we're a directory for all homeowners.
We need to teach everyone that.
We'll, we'll picture a person. Yeah, okay.
And your address.
I'll become an ID person. And if Jeff doesn't answer, run by this address.
So we need to check in, get them some time to answer the system.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Okay, all right, is there anything else?
No, we totally got off subject.
All right, we'll go in the journal, the work.